Trustee O'Rourke.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rasich.
Here.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
If we could rise for the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presidential comments?
I have two. The first one, I want to express the condolences to our village administrator. His mother passed away last week, late Friday, and he's down in Florida making arrangements, and so thoughts and prayers go out to him. On a minor note, participated in the local mayor's cup with the Rotary last Thursday, and we came away with the trophy again, so we're real proud of that. So the trophy's down in the foyer in the boardroom, so that's all I have.
Trustees' comments?
I have one comment on the prescription drug. I gather we stopped accepting drugs, or prescription drugs, yesterday, and Commander Greco in the newspaper was saying that you're looking into renewing the program somehow in the future once you can get a handle on the costs. Any idea of timing?
Well, we have no timing. What we're looking to do is possibly try to create a partnership with some entity in the village. Prior to the end of this month, the program was basically financed through the Department of, I'm sorry, the Drug Enforcement Administration, the DEA, and they picked up all the costs of the destructions, destruction of the drugs. Recently, they changed that policy, though, where it would fall back on the municipalities, and the cost, the place that we would have to go to, the cost was $3 a pound, and every week, we were recovering over 100 pounds of drugs, so, in our collection box. So, we estimate the cost over the course of a year would be roughly about $10,000 to continue the program. So we are trying to work a, see if we can work a partnership with some entity in the village, and we probably won't go back full-time to the prescription drug box, but we may look to do a quarterly collection program where we would put out press releases and then have a process where people could drop off drugs on a specific day at the police department. So it's something we're currently still working on, yes.
As a valuable service, I hope we can indeed do it, because keeps things from going to the trash and it up in the water system, so.
Absolutely, I used it myself, absolutely.
It works, figure out a solution to it, but I look forward to the answer, so, thank you.
Chief, in regards to that, did the DEA advise us if they had discontinue this program statewide or by region, or?
By countrywide.
By countrywide, okay.
Nationwide, I should say.
Thank you.
I'd like to make just a brief comment in regard to the Wounded Warrior Race that was held on, in Settlers Park on May the 23rd, Saturday, May the 23rd. It was a beautiful cooperation between the Village of Plainfield, the police department, our Public Works, our administration, and working with the individuals from the Wounded Warrior Foundation. I know in excess of probably 600, 700 individuals ran. They had to have had, at the minimum, 1,500 people here participating in the activity. It was a marvelous fundraiser for the Wounded Warrior Foundation, and the cooperation amongst everyone was really appreciated. It highlighted not only of our community, but it also highlighted the cooperation that individuals feel when they deal with the Village of Plainfield. I, I'm not going to speak of individuals, because I know the Wounded Warrior representatives will be here to discuss their participation with us. But again, I would just like to say, it was a great cooperation, it was another instance, and Mother Nature cooperated also. It was a beautiful morning, it just, everything went well, and everyone sung the praises of all the activity, and thank you for all that were participating.
Are there any other trustee comments? If not, this would be the time for public comments, not to exceed three to five minutes. Come to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Chris Sims. I live at 11523 South Christie Drive here in Plainfield, 605-85, just up the road from you. I'm one of probably many Sunny Farm Acres residents who have contacted you, or if they haven't, they probably will soon. I'm here with some other residents, we just want to bring up a few points regarding the proposed rezoning from agriculture to classification to I-1, and I'd like to start off with the zoning and then pass it on and stay within the three to five minutes. We're very concerned about this rezoning, primarily just for its inconsistent current and future use plans. There is already a plan in our neighborhood. We fall under Oswego's comprehensive plan, I guess due to boundary agreements, and all the property surrounding us is either agricultural or it's residential. We're concerned that this also sets a bad precedent, not only for our subdivision, but as you see parcels of land in and around our area, Plainfield, Oswego, if small pieces of parcels are allowed to be zoned industrial, that sets a precedent, so when a five-acre parcel down the road comes up for consideration, they have precedent to also zone that, yeah, We're also concerned about if this does become industrial, what some of the other intended uses might be. For example, the individual who wants to put an asphalt facility on there, we're not real sure what the true and intended uses are for that. We were told at Wheatland Township that there would only be a small three to five-acre area used. However, I see on the plan that was given to abutting adjoining owners, a size double that for future contractor yard, which is way over five acres and actually gets into an area of floodplain. And this is not even about an individual applicant, this is about the use of industrial, and I'm looking at the industrial permitted uses, airport facilities, pawn shops, firearms dealers, vehicle storage and towing, medical cannabis cultivation, and with special approval, they can put detention and correction facilities, recycled materials outdoors, and I guess medical cannabis dispensing. I think we have enough drug and firearms problems in our community. We believe there's also suitable land ready to move in that already has the I-1 designation within a few miles in any direction, Arrowhead, Cloud Creek, Wheatland. I'm holding right here the staff report from the Will County Land Use Department. This came out Friday afternoon, and reviewing the six criteria that they use, they have recommended denial of allowing this application to be zoned to I-1. We've sent letters and petitions, many of you have received it. We have reached out to our elected officials as well, speaking very recently with Darren Benefield of our district up there, he's in opposition as well. We also have letters from Wheatland Township and working with the Village of Oswego, who share our similar concerns. We're very concerned about the future zoning of this and the unintended consequences that come from it, and I'd like to hand it off to Carrie Rankins.
My name is Carrie Rankins, and I'm at 25958 West Karen Drive, and actually, I was the one that started this email blast to about 52 trustees, politicians, you name it, as many people as we can. And so I'm going to address the traffic and environmental. Now, we know that, if you think about Heggs Road to 119th, en route 30, it's increasingly busy, it's a deadly stretch of road, there's quick acceleration and deceleration capability, but if you look at a speed of 55 miles an hour, I don't think a concrete truck is going to go zero to 55 in two seconds. It's just not going to happen. And so, we're looking at the increased grade on the road, that's a problem because it's an obstructed view. We've looked at school transportation, Oswego 2 or 308, travel their buses along that route, as well as Plainfield 202. So what I did is, I've been in touch with the IDOT organization, and we did a study. And the study shows from 2005 to 2013, just on that stretch of road, there were 272 accidents. There was one fatality, and of that 272, there were 153 injured individuals. So then I decided to look at it a little bit deeper, because I wanted to see if it was, how many accidents happened Monday through Friday during that daylight time. Believe it or not, 202 accidents. So we're concerned about the stretch of the road, we know that the Plainfield Fire Department is going to, has a plan in place for training centers, we also know that the Preserve Home Building is going to take place between 119th and 127th off of 248th. What's that going to do, it's going to increase our traffic. Then we looked at environmental. Now with environmental, I don't know if you're aware of this, but Sunny Farm Acres is on wellwater, and we currently have three retention ponds, so we've pulled the maps for that. But what we also know is that at the beginning of the Norman Shed and down southwest, it runs into the DuPage River. So we're concerned about runoff, we're concerned about carcinogens, solvents to clean the trucks, leakage from the trucks, and then the rainwater runoff from chemicals coming into those ponds in our subdivision. What concerns us also is fuel tanks, the wildlife in that area, we've got owls, we've got, what's that, what's that bird?
The egrets.
Oh, the egrets, yeah, and the blue heron, and so, we're concerned about watershed issues, pond issues, wellwater, you name it. We're out looking at it to study it, to really express our opposition to this plan. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mike.
Thank you. Mike Blalock, Sunny Farm Acres, 11364 South Christie Drive. Just wanted to reiterate that none of us have a specific objection to the potential new owner of this property in particular. We have an objection to what the next owner of that property might do if the zoning is changed. There is no way anybody can predict the future as far as what he intends to do with his property if the zoning is changed, or what any next future owner of that property might choose to do with it, some of which were listed earlier by Chris. We do have a, you know, a very solid group of individuals within our subdivision and adjoining subdivisions that are all opposed to this. We've already got some buy-in from both Oswego Village as well as, as well as Wheatland Township objecting to this zoning change. Essentially, our goal here today is to force the Will County Board to have to pass by supermajority the zoning change. So any support that we could have through you to oppose the zoning change would be helpful in that effort. We want your support in being able to craft a letter of opposition, similar to what's already been put together through Will County Board, and we hope to see very soon from Oswego. We hope that collectively, together as a group, even though none of these entities have direct control over the rezoning of this particular property, that you will join with us in support of rejecting this zoning effort, so that we don't set a precedent which cannot be undone once it's done. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, please let us know.
Question, Mr. Harvey. What require, what will force a supermajority vote on the Will County Board to pass this?
In this case, it's a county rezoning, so adjoining property owners can probably object. That could be heard of that.
Before you leave the podium, concerned citizens, if you have an agenda, item six on the agendas this evening is this particular proposal. So the discussion will take place with the village board, and there will be a vote on the letter of objection by this board. So please remain, and you'll be able to hear whatever discussion and vote will take place.
Okay, we appreciate that, and that's the reason we came.
I understand that to be true.
Because we want to strengthen our position.
Very good, and thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Not, then we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rasich.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on May 18th, bills paid and bills payable reports for June 1st, and approval of the City View Annual Maintenance Agreement with Harris Computer Systems in the amount of
I move we approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second. That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rasich.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is text amendment, religious assembly. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3216, requiring religious assemblies to obtain a special permit in the B1 and B3 commercial districts.
That's a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing.
I would just like to make a comment, I guess I would like to suggest or see if there's any additional support from the board about adding additional review, not necessarily for this topic, but the special use topic going forward, looking at some other uses within the village, to see maybe if those would clarify or qualify for a special use as well. Similar reasons why this one was brought forward, maybe there's other existing uses out there that would fall under the same preview that I don't know have been discussed, but maybe it's something that we could add to the call at some future meeting.
I would agree with that, to look at it.
Yes, based on village board input, we will perhaps bring that to a call meeting for further discussion, to actually look at different areas for potential special use, special uses in the zoning ordinance.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, the motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3216, requiring religious assemblies to obtain a special permit in the B1 and B3 commercial districts. Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rasich.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Lot 2 Meyer Pet Plus. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the site plan review for a 15,614 square foot retail building to be located at the southeastern corner of Route 59 and 135th Street. So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I have, I guess a question for clarity, and I believe, Michael, was there a discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission about adding access, connecting access from the south?
Yes, yes, there was. There was actually discussion at the Plan Commission, and applicant's architect did agree, applicant has agreed to actually add a cross-access to the south. There'll be no loss of parking spaces, so there's a perfect opportunity, as you know, it's consistent with the village policy, to always promote cross-access through outlots.
And the other question or comment I guess I had was revolving that access point that exists right now, it's, I believe it's designed as a right-in, right-out that abuts this subject lot, but there's no actual signage, so I think it creates some confusion between commuters coming in and going out of that area, people exiting Myers or people coming down 135th. Doesn't say no left turn on 135th, it doesn't say right turn only going out, so I don't know if that's something we should consider reviewing and maybe at least adding the sign to avoid the confusion for the motorists.
If the board does support that, I think we can request some signage. There was extensive discussion at the Plan Commission about that access point, it really is not a formal pork chop there, it's somewhat confusing. People use it unfortunately as a full access point, so I think there is an opportunity to work with applicant and Myers to refine that access point, either through a modification of the existing structural barrier that's actually located at that point, or actually by signage. So we can, based on the board's input, we can work with the applicant on that.
I would support that.
How is your trusty O'Rourke, if you have a motion to add it?
I think simply adding a stipulation, maybe additional stipulation, requiring the appropriate signage at that access point, and the staff at that point can work with the applicant.
I just wonder if we shouldn't be cautious on that, because if you're going down the street and you realize that pet store's there, then you wouldn't be allowed to turn in until you're well past and then come around, and then you could not exit there at that pork chop, if it is refined, to come back out on the 59. So you would have to go south again, so, you know, we really support that secondary road to get away from our Route 59.
You might break me for a moment, but I think the way the PUD or the original design was, was for right-in, right-out.
That's correct.
But I mean, it wasn't a true pork chop, is what I'm trying to get at.
I don't know how, if the design was a true pork chop, but I think the intent was to have it operate as a true pork chop.
Yeah, I think the mayor raises a good point, it wasn't, unfortunately, it wasn't constructed as a true pork chop, and I think that's caused some of the challenges or issues over there from a traffic perspective. So we can work with the applicant on that. It is somewhat confusing.
And is, so is the other stipulation for the cross-access already part of the motion?
I believe we will, we can add that to this, perhaps to the forced stipulation. There was actually a discussion at the Plan Commission about it, but I don't see it in the staff report, so perhaps we can add a forced stipulation talking about right-in, right-out, and also cross-access. That's noted by the village clerk, and supported by the village board.
I would support that.
I agree as well, and if there's any other comments from other board members, if you're willing to listen.
One thing, just to make sure, the original submission to the Plan Commission did not have an elevated corner. The elevations we have now show that an elevation, is that in place or will be?
If I would allow the architect, actually Mr. Mangerton, to actually highlight that, there was, they did agree to basically modify the elevations, we have a picture of the elevations perhaps, but unfortunately, with regards to some way, sometimes the way these things work from a business perspective, they had some internal challenges, so maybe I'll allow the architect, Mr. Mangerton, to highlight what they're proposing, and what they're proposing in lieu of the higher parapet.
Good evening, my name is David Mangerton, I'm a principal in the architectural firm of K. Mayne Associates, Inc., Architects, with offices in Deerfield, Illinois. When staff had suggested a raised tower, we went to our client, and he agreed to the change in the architecture. This building is 100% leased, by the way, so it was then sent to the, to tenants, and of course, the tenant at the south end objected because he felt that he would, he lost some prominence because of the raised parapet. So, client called me back, and then I talked to staff, and as a backup position, we had suggested that we do a corner feature, a landscape seat wall. There's a bike path that terminates at that point, and we thought that would be a good place to have a architectural feature, which is a curved seat wall at the terminus of that bicycle path.
I guess my comment is, the raised parapet, I thought was extremely important, and I'm not at all sure what you're proposing is going to look like. I think being a hard corner, that elevation makes a difference. I'm not quite sure, I understand why the other tenant is not happy about that, because I think it enhances the whole building, but if we're going to try to approve, I'd like to see what the alternative is, because I like what's here, and if you're changing that, I'm not comfortable unless I know what it looks like.
Was, was the packet updated with that landscape feature?
There was only a landscape plan, there's actually, there was no actual drawing, no actual hearts in the middle of the actual knee wall, which again, is part of the landscape plan, so, again, staff is looking for village board input on this proposed elevation. You have, actually, you can see, there's two alternative elevations here, the one in the bottom was the first actual submittal, staff worked with the applicant, they came back with a revised plan, Mr. Mangerton has outlined some of their challenges. I guess staff is looking for the input in the village board based on these two elevations.
I'd like to see pictures of the wall, if you could at least, if you could get that, and then the parapet as well, instead of just a block building.
Looking for other input at the village board, and if that's the case, may be appropriate to, I guess, continue this case, allow the applicant to refine the landscape plan, to come back, so it can be full consideration of this matter.
That's what I would recommend, if they insist on making a change from what we're seeing. I think this is really important, and so I'm really not sure that the alternative is going to be adequate, but if they want to propose it, I'd suggest they come back with more information so we can actually take a look at it, so I recommend that we continue this particular case until our next meeting.
You know, sir, I'd like to make a comment, you know, you may view the board action as being picky, particular, I can, I've been on the board for 10-plus years. I'm not going to name the commercial property, but it's at a entrance to the Village of Plainfield. I can remember when it initially was planned, it was going to be a highlight of a corner. Well, what it ultimately ended up was a stereotypical part of their corporate product. It was nothing special about it, it was supposed to be special, and then it kept getting diminished, 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 and the board was, and I was remissing my responsibilities also when these individuals are saying, we should have this, this, and this, very particular before we approve it. I think it's really essential, and I know it's a delay on your part, but yet, it will bring a better product, and I think everybody will be happy, and it won't be something that you look for, we'll look forward to in the future and say, boy, we really made a big mistake by rushing into that. And so you can understand our concern, hopefully you can. If not, you'll have to live with, well, very good, sir, thank you.
So based on that, we'll continue this to the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to continue?
Take a motion.
Withdraw a motion, and then make a motion again, please.
Second.
Whoever, Mayor Clerk could make that motion.
Trustee Benucci, you made the motion.
I withdraw the motion of approval.
You'd like to make a motion to continue it?
Okay, I thought, okay, I recommend, I move we table this to the next meeting for with further information.
There a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to table this item. Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rasich.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Lot 9 Meyer. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt the findings of fact of the Plan Commission as the findings of fact of the Board of Trustees, and furthermore, to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval of a special use for plan development for the proposed development of Lot 9 of the Meyer Plainfield subdivision.
I move that we approve the site plan review for the proposed Plainfield Lot 9 development on Meyer subdivision, subject to the two stipulations in the report. Second.
The motion was to adopt the findings of fact of the Plan Commission and direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance. Are there any comments or questions?
I just have a comment, I'm sorry, regarding the right-of-way along 135th Street there, there's a jog, do we know if any additional right-of-way needs to be dedicated?
No, in fact, that was, there have been full improvements in why there is a jog or a variation in the property line, is the property to the west really reflects the IDOT improvements. We know when IDOT improved Route 59, they also improved the intersection along 135th Street, so that's why there's a variation or a difference in the property line. They took more right-of-way, basically. No.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, the motion was made and seconded to adopt the findings of fact of the Plan Commission as the finding of facts of the Board of Trustees, and to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval of a special use for plan development for the proposed development of Lot 9 in the Meyer Plainfield subdivision. Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rasich.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the site plan review for the proposed development of Lot 9.
I move.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions on this item?
You know, I have one particular comment. It's on this particular, on this particular, you folks don't, it's on page three of five of our staff report. It's simply, you don't have to read it, I'm just going to mention a particular thing. On landscaping, a couple of years ago, Trustee Lamb had mentioned some of the disastrous landscaping, the hedging on some of the Meyer property. The other day, I was at Meyer, and when you're trying to pull out into some of the particular lanes to exit all of the general property, some of the hedges have grown to such an extent that they provide blockage view, and I, blockage from attempting to get out. People are coming and going, especially if they're in a hurry one way or another. Literally, sight is lost. And so what I'm saying is, I think our staff has to pay very close attention. Oftentimes, we overlook landscaping and think landscaping is, you know, it's done and it looks real nice. Oftentimes, it's dangerous, and the Meyer property is extremely dangerous, and I think I, in fact, I didn't have an opportunity today, but I want to talk to our ordinance people, say, "Hey, is there a possibility we can go investigate?" Saying to them, "Hey, why don't you cut this material down by 50%?" There are accidents waiting to be happen, happening, and so what I'm saying is, we have to take specific care to look into landscaping. Like I say, it's a minor thing, but yet, it's a very important thing from a safety point of view. Thank you.
Very well said, I must say. I'm glad you remembered from, because that particular lot is particularly bad. If they don't cut those shrub, trees and shrubs down, you really can't see a car coming out. If they trim them, it's okay, but they keep growing. It's, it's a problem with a lot of the lots. Now, it looks nice, but safety's got to be paramount, so I totally agree with you.
Now, you brought that up a couple of years, and I was in agreement with you. I have a good memory, it's relatively short, but I can still, I can still remember that particular situation. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to approve the site plan review for Lot 9 of Meyer subdivision, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report. Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Bajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is County Case 25657 West Route 30. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to recommend that the village president send a letter of objection for the proposed map amendment from A1 to I1 to the Will County Land Use Department.
I'm moved. Whoops.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I'd like to just comment on the fact that there's universal opposition to this. We do not have control, as was mentioned by the public people who spoke. I just hope that we can influence enough to make sure they get that supermajority required to pass it, because it is detrimental to that particular area. I don't know anybody who's for it. Let's add our voice to keep it out of there. It just is not appropriate for that particular location.
You know, I'd also like to comment, concerned citizens, I'm not going to address your, have your names, but the situation is, you have the right to regress government, obviously. It's one of our civil liberties in the Bill of Rights, the right to regress government, and, you know, what you're doing is perfectly logical, and continue with your efforts. I know this board is very cogent of the fact that you have a concern, it's a concern of ours also. It's near our community, we want what is best for not only our own community, but what is adjacent to the community, because possibly, that could be annexed, some of that land could be annexed in the future. But it's good to see individuals with a concern come and speak in public, and I applaud your effort. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to recommend that the village president send a letter of objection for the proposed map amendment for the county case at 25657 West Route 30. Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Bajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Community 5K. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the road closures as identified in the staff report for the Community 5K to be held on June 27th at 7:30 a.m. I'm moved.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Bajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Resolution for Village Participation in Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Collaborative for Street Lighting. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1711, authorizing the purchase of electricity for street lighting purposes, and authorizing the village administrator to approve a contract with the lowest-cost electricity provider for a period of up to 24 months.
I can give a real brief overview here related to this. Over 10 years ago, the deregulation started to occur, and the village was actually a benefactor of that. It started with our water and wastewater facilities, they were the larger users within the community, and they qualified for deregulation. So we did form consortiums with other companies, or other communities, I should say, to increase our buying power and reduce the cost of electricity, and that's been, worked very, very well for us at the wastewater treatment facility, and the water pumping facility, and all the other water facilities too, as well. As time went on, then it rolled out to affect the streetlights. There are over 6,000 streetlights within the community, budget of about $250,000 a year is what's expended for streetlights and electricity, and we were a benefactor in that as well. Approximately two years ago, through Will County, in the mayor and board's leadership, we were able to actually have our residents come together, and with other communities, and go through the process, and improve our buying power and reduce the cost for our residents too, as well. This contract's coming again for electricity related to streetlights. We have an option to join 140 other communities within the area, increase our buying power, and get a fixed rate for the next two years. Or the other option, as all the communities have the other option, is to go back with ComEd alone, and the risk in that is, is that at that point, we would be at ComEd's daily fluctuating rate, which we've looked back at the past, could be anywhere from $0.04 a kilowatt hour up to $0.07 or $0.08 a kilowatt hour. We're currently at about $0.04 and $0.50 per kilowatt hour with the current contract here. So we would be looking for the board's direction or support to go out again to the market, along with 140 other communities, and secure a fixed rate for the next, they'll actually bid it in two different rates, a 12-month or a 24-month. That's why it gives the administrator some flexibility to choose based on the input that's provided after the bids are opened, and also, if the bids come in at $0.09 a kilowatt hour, we have the option to not go with a bid at this time, and to go for a rebid in the future. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any of the questions, but I wanted to give a little history more for the public, because this process has saved the village hundreds of thousands of dollars over the past 10 years, and it works very, very well for us.
I'll make the motion. Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 1711, authorizing the purchase of electricity for street lighting purposes, and authorizing the village administrator to approve a contract with the lowest-cost electricity provider for a period of up to 24 months. Are there any comments or questions?
I just have a comment, it just sounds like it's a win. Comes back high, we don't have to do anything, right?
Are there any other comments or questions? Not then, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Bajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Administrators' report?
Yes, very briefly, you have in your packet a memo from Mr. Kuzenko, which outlines a proposal to award a new Office 365 email migration project as relates to this proposal for a sum of between $8,750 to $12,000. If there's any questions the village board may have, Mr. Kuzenko is here to outline specifically the proposal itself.
Question for staff. Is this product listed on the Illinois State's Microsoft Select Agreement, or no?
It is a subscription service, so it doesn't fall under that agreement. It does allow us the ability, should we do so, to add Office software licenses under that agreement in the future. That is not part of this project, this is strictly to move our hosted, our email to a hosted service.
Okay, so it's, so we understand each other, this exact product that we're approving signed is not in the state's select agreement?
Correct. It's not available.
I'm not a computer person, but obviously, with all the stuff in the news, I guess the one question that comes to my mind is the security piece behind all this. Are you guys comfortable with all?
Yeah, actually, noted in the memo is, this would be a product under Microsoft's Government Cloud Computing Platform, which is US-based data centers. The employees at those data centers have a higher security clearance. Data is only stored in the US, is not shipped off. Microsoft does have centers worldwide with this product, since it's a government-based, only government users can access it, and it's only stored in the US data centers. Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions? Would be seeking a motion.
That's my motion.
Second.
What's the motion?
The motion's been made and seconded to award the Office 365 email migration project to innovative MSP solutions in the amount of $8,750, and to authorize the purchase of the associated Office 365 subscriptions in the amount not to exceed $12,000. Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Bajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Management Services Report.
No report.
Engineers Report.
No report.
Planning Department Report.
No report.
Building Department Report.
No report, other than an operation report for this month.
You know, before you move on, inner building department report, what's really encouraging, and we all, oftentimes, often, we mention residential new construction. It is really booming. So far this year, we have 30, or 43 new construction permits. Last year, it was 37, and if we go back in history, the year 2010, there were eight for the same particular period of time. Construction is coming back, the new, the new house market is recovering, and Plainfield seems to be doing its job and leading the way. It's great. It's good to see that report. Thank you.
Another interesting aspect of the report is the fact there's a number of houses in the $400,000 range that are being constructed. We've been talking about downsizing, but actually, about half of them, I didn't count exactly, but roughly half are over $400,000, which is impressive, it's a very good sign.
There's still a strong market for the semi-custom, custom market, so it continues, especially in Plainfield.
Public Works Report. Police Chiefs.
What?
What?
Wait, 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 wait.
He gave you a report.
I told my family I wasn't going to be home till 10 o'clock.
Oh, Alan, don't pick me up, Alan.
Alan, Alan, say something.
Jim.
I've heard my comments for two weeks.
That's a brutal. Police Chiefs Report.
Are you sure?
Thank you. The first item under the police report is, I am seeking board's consideration to purchase two 2015 Ford Interceptor sedans from Rod Baker Ford in the amount of $52,512. These vehicles would go into our patrol division. We did seek competitive, I'm sorry, we did seek pricing through the state bid, which we received through a dealership down in Greenfield, Illinois. Through checking with other dealerships, we were able to get a lower price at Rod Baker Ford here in Plainfield. So we would seek permission from the, or approval from the board to make that purchase through Rod Baker Ford for $52,512 for two 2015 Ford Interceptor sedans.
I make the motion to authorize the purchase of two 2015 Ford Interceptor sedans from Rod Baker Ford at the amount of $52,512. And I'd like to, well, that was my motion.
Second.
Question.
Comment.
Where are we going to put the, are we getting rid of two cars?
We are getting rid of two cars. They have excessive maintenance on them. Both of them have in excess of 75,000 miles on them with excessive maintenance costs, so.
They go into the auction.
We're going to most likely send them to auction, yes.
This is the cost of a fully outfitted cruiser, right?
Yes, it is. Other, well, it will not have the emergency equipment in there or anything like that, but as far as the vehicle itself, yes, it will.
Oh, my comment, chief, you know, I realize there's an awful lot of work goes into the purchase of vehicles and such, I'm glad that you did a little extra work until we finally got Rod Baker to be the best price. I'm not saying there was any coercion or anything, but it's good to deal with, I'm not saying that.
I won't touch that.
No, I'm not going to say anything like that, but it's good to deal on a local level, and it was encouraging to see that they were very cooperative in wanting to do it with us. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to authorize the purchase of two Ford Interceptor sedans, as identified in the agenda. Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassage.
Yes.
Trustee Bajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is, I'm seeking approval to purchase three 2015 Ford Taurus sedans. One will be utilized in the administrative division by an investigator, and two will go to the courts division. They will be replacing, the two courts division vehicles will be replacing two vehicles that we originally got through asset forfeiture, so there was no original cost on those vehicles, but they've reached their excessive mileage, where we're getting extra maintenance. The one in investigations will be replacing a vehicle that has well over 100,000 miles on it. We did get pricing, excuse me, through the state bid, and the lowest price did come from a dealership down in Springfield, Illinois. However, there would be additional costs to bring those vehicles up here, whether we send staff down there, or we have them shipped up here, there would be additional costs. It would still bring the price lower than our local dealership. We did go out and attempt to get competitive bidding, and we got a price that was very competitive through Rod Baker Ford. Again, it is slightly higher than the state bid by roughly $1,000, $1,200 or so, but I would seek permission to go through Rod Baker Ford in an effort to keep our business local, in the amount of $54,849 for the three 2015 Ford Taurus sedans.
I move we authorize the purchase of the three Ford Taurus sedans through Rod Baker Ford for the amount of $54,849.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
Chief.
No, go ahead.
Okay, okay. You had mentioned that it was a little more money to go through Rod Baker, but we also would have to take into consideration the implicit cost, actually have to pay, have to pay a staff member to drive both ways, fly down, whatnot, and then drive back, in addition to fuel and everything else, not having that person here, and possibly have to have somebody else in overtime to replace them. So, I'm not going to ask you for the exact dollar amount, but as long as you're comfortable that this is, you know, the best value for the village, then I'm going to go ahead.
Yes. Thank you.
Are these take-home cars, or are these ones that are left at the village?
These, the two court cars are left at the village, used by our two attorneys, going to mainly Will County, but also training classes and other courtrooms at occasion. The investigator vehicle would be a take-home vehicle.
Rod Baker couldn't drop the price.
Unfortunately, no.
I guess my comment is, I guess if you do, if I did the math correctly, it's roughly $417 difference per car, and that would not include that transportation charge from Springfield, which has got to be at least half that, right, 200 bucks?
Absolutely, it would definitely be several hundred dollars, whether we pick it up or whether they ship it up here.
Probably a couple hundred dollars to keep it local.
You don't have any asset forfeiture cars that can replace the previous asset forfeiture cars with?
The court, court.
Court services one.
No, we don't currently have any asset forfeiture right now, no.
You're saying to see some more vehicles?
No, that's not what I'm saying, I'm just asking.
I have a question.
Wouldn't look real good to have an attorney pull up in like a Jaguar or something.
So, are we, are we bound, have to accept the lowest bid, or what is our policy?
No, I mean, technically speaking, we are required only in public works projects to go out for competitive bidding. If you're low response, low response, and bitter, and even in those situations, you can, you can waive it by a supermajority of the board. So for this, we, you know, we have actually a lot more discretion, because this isn't this, we, you know, we have actually a lot more discretion. Because this isn't even, you know, required by, you know, state statute. But generally, you know, staff wants to, you know, get the best price whatever we're looking for in terms of vendor services or products, but it's not a requirement under a state statute.
Chief, also, the two units for Lego, they're not going to have the excessive miles as a patrol unit. So these would last quite a bit longer than.
That's correct. The two vehicles I had mentioned that were asset forfeiture, when we acquired those vehicles, they already had many miles on them and then obviously we added to them. With these vehicles, if approved, coming to us, the mileage would not be adding up as quickly as it would a regular patrol vehicle. You're absolutely right.
Do you have a projection on how many miles the court services drives per year? See how, just to see how long this, this purchase will last, how many years out?
If you could pass that on to the mic, Chief, so, in case somebody didn't hear.
Basically, what Attorney Myers pointed out is, the mileage would be minimal, back and forth travels to Will County Courthouse, which is in downtown Joliet, other meetings and occasionally some training classes. So the mileage buildup per year is minimal, estimated probably less than 15,000 miles a year. Estimated less than probably 15,000 miles a year.
Have they looked at leases at all for the, for the low mileage cars?
We, we have not explored leases, no. We can in the future, but we have not done that yet, no.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to authorize the purchase of three Ford Taurus sedans through Rod Baker Ford in the amount of $54,849. Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you. The last item I have on the agenda is seeking board's approval to purchase six, I'm sorry, yeah, six new Panasonic Toughbook CF31 laptop computers from CDS Office Technologies in the amount of $26,028. These would replace computers that are currently in our vehicles that the technology is becoming outdated. The nice thing about this model is it would fit directly into the docking stations that we have in the vehicles now. So no, there would not be any additional costs as far as upgrading those, that part of the equipment. So I am seeking board's approval, I'm sorry, this, this is also through, this is through a, what was my train of thought here for a second? State bid, thank you. This was through a state bidding process and this was the price we were quoted. So I am seeking board's authority to purchase six Panasonic Toughbook for 2,000, $26,028.
I motion that the village board authorize the purchase of six new Panasonic Tech Toughbook CF31 laptop computers from CDS Office Technologies in the amount of $26,028.
Second. Question, Chief, as I recall, in the budget process, these are included in the budget, you were phasing in these computers over several year period.
That's correct.
Still have more that we would do next year, but this is, this year's segment that we've already approved in the budget.
That's correct. In conjunction with our IT department, we do have a phase-in process every year with our IT needs, these specifically, but other IT needs at the police department. And we try to phase them in every several years because as you're aware, this technology, almost as soon as you buy it, it's getting outdated. So it is a several-year process. We, we try not to hit it all at one time.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to authorize the purchase of six new Panasonic Toughbook CF31 laptop computers as identified. Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you. Last item I have is just to inform the folks that are watching on TV or any other place, we do have a large event going on in town over the next couple of days. We'll be hosting a military funeral, line of death funeral at Overman Jones and St. Mary's for United States Marine Corps Corporal Sarah Medina. That's going to occur tomorrow afternoon. She'll be arriving in town and then the services will be on Wednesday at St. Mary's. Please be aware that there will be significant traffic congestion around 59 and 30 and there may be temporary road closures in that area, especially tomorrow and early Wednesday morning. So please be aware as you're traveling through town on those days. Thank you.
One additional question on a separate subject. Last time, we talked about the weather radios. Is that purchase moving ahead?
That, that purchase, as you are aware, that purchase was approved by the board a couple, last meeting, I believe. The radios have been ordered, we're just waiting for them to come in. And we're still on our timeline for the end of this month, June, to have our first two days, which is June, pardon me one second, that would be June 24th and 25th at the police department to have our first two days for allowing the public to come in, the residents to come in and purchase those radios.
That'd be great. Got a four-year-old grandson who's waiting patiently, or not very patiently for it, so, thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have, thank you.
Attorneys report?
No report, thank you.
Reminders?
June 2nd is the planning commission meeting, June 8th will be our next committee of the whole. June 10th is our coffee with the mayor and June 15th will be our next village board meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.